Yes.
All right, this is Wednesday, November 2 at 7:00 PM. This is a special meeting in committee of the whole for District 96. Kathy, can you call the roll?
Ms. Gunn, here. Ms. Fieber?
Here.
Mr. Marhol?
Here.
Mr. Muirhead?
Here.
Ms. Murphy?
Here.
And Mr. Hunt?
Here.
The form is present.
Okay, is there any public comment?
There is none.
Nope, all right. Okay then, are there any proposed changes to the agenda? Okay, then next that brings us to Welcome to Ames by Principal Todd Gierman.
Good evening, District 96 Board of Education, Dr. Ryan Toye, and welcome back to your pandemic meeting place. It's nice to have you back without a pandemic and glad to see everybody. Just wanted to take a moment to share a little something new that we're doing at Ames School this school year. It's called Dive Into the Day: The Dolphin Way. And we built a social-emotional block into our master schedule every day that takes place from 8:20 to 8:50 AM. And our team at Ames creates a monthly calendar that contains SEL lessons throughout the month that the teachers teach the students as specialists. So everybody on the staff is working with kids from 8:20 to 8:50 on their social-emotional learning lessons. In September, our theme was teamwork and respect. October was responsibility, and we just kicked off November with talking about integrity. At the end of each month, we have a school-wide SEL assembly where we gather the entire student body, all 460 of us go into the gym, and we have an assembly that celebrates that month's SEL theme, and then it kicks off the next month's theme. So for instance, for September, our kindergarten students, so it's mainly led by the staff and the students, and for September, which was, I'm going to go back to September, teamwork and respect, our kindergarten students actually taught the entire student body a song about teamwork and respect. So you want to talk about cute, it was pretty cute watching 460 kids sing a song that the kindergartners taught them. So thank you for letting me take a moment just to share a little bit about something new we started in this school year, and have a great evening. Thank you.
Thanks. Always great to hear about happenstance at schools. Okay, then that takes us to old business. The only item under old business is to approve on the Hauser Auditorium Upgrade Project, an action item. Is there a motion that the board accept the bid, the base bid, and award the project to Construction Inc. for the base bid in the amount of $1,185,000?
So moved.
Second.
Let's see, and I imagine we'll have discussion on this.
And Remesh is here. If there's, maybe Remesh wants to provide an overview, and then if you have questions, specific question he has.
I'll try and be brief on this subject, but if you recall, the original project was, we were looking at spending about $100,000 or $200,000. But then we did an assessment on the project last year, and then we came up with a good, better, and a best scenario. So the three scenarios range from $1.1 million all the way to $1.8 million, and we chose the middle path in the scope, which essentially put in the right infrastructure at this time, the electrical infrastructure, and a basic audiovisual system that's going to be part of this contract. And I'm happy to report that the bids came in about $150,000 less than our number that we had predicted. So it was a good bid. We had five bidders who came in ranging from the $1,185 we were talking about all the way to $1.47. So it was well received, and the market, I have to say, is, I won't say it's softening right now, but we've seen that the rate of increase has started to dip. But we're still in a very high inflationary market. So that's one of the big points to take away. And we have a couple of bids coming up fairly shortly. We're doing the Blight Park repurpose, too.
Mm-hmm. Just a quick question I had. So it talks about a $50,000 general allowance that's, I kind of remember something from the Ames Project, where we had a much bigger allowance that's essentially just what, a catch-all for any overruns, or?
Exactly. So when we start opening up the walls and they start doing the electrical upgrades, there's a very good likelihood that we may find something that we could not see previously. So rather than come back and ask for a change order, we've created this allowance in the contract, and we'll draw back from that. And if it's not used, we get the money back.
Is that going to be adequate, do we think, or that's a little small?
It is very small, but the project's not very large either. We have a very fixed scope for this one. As I said, we could spend $3 million if we wanted to, but we don't want to. We're going to try and keep to our scope out here. I mean, if we run into issues that can be deferred, we're going to defer it, because the key out here is putting the right infrastructure in. We believe we have that all covered in the electrical side and equipment that's required for the AV system. And you can add upgrades as the monies get available in the future. That's what this project allows us to. Right now, we cannot, even if someone came and gave us $200,000 worth of equipment, we could not put that to good use at the auditorium.
I know we made this a special meeting so we could kind of get the ball rolling, but what would be the presumed timeline if we adopt this?
So a lot of the items in this one will have long late-time items. So that's the reason why we decided to award the contract now, but the work is going to be done only in summer of next year. So we have to be leaving adequate time for the contractor to acquire all the pieces of equipment, get their labor pool correct, so that as soon as schools close, they can hit the project running. That was a big advantage.
Next year, like next summer?
Next summer.
Twenty-three.
Twenty-three.
One school's, okay. The calendar year, twenty-three this summer. Yes. Okay.
I will say, even though it's way more than we originally talked about, the fact that the electrical upgrades are happening, I think is very smart. It's just like when we dealt with all the old plumbing issues at Central. I think it's just a good future mindset, and I really appreciate that we're going that way, so.
And we're also addressing...
It may not be the whole thing, but to go back and do stuff later, I think is a mistake. So I think, I appreciate what you did here and all the work to kind of get it in between.
Sure. And we are addressing the handicap issues as well, which have not been touched all these decades.
Yeah, that's true. Great.
The letter from DLA specifically said that they called a few references and got really good feedback, but it didn't say that they had any personal experience. I'm just curious, I'm guessing they didn't, or they would have said it. Have you, by chance?
I have not worked with this particular firm, but they have done schoolwork before. We did find out that they have done work in other suburban school districts. I personally have not worked with them, but their references banded out really well.
Yeah, okay.
Yep. There was a contractor who we were warned off against. He did not bid the job.
Okay. And I know you had said before, they were having trouble finding parts for the AV system and all of the performance equipment, so this will kind of solve that, is that correct? Or are those part of the future upgrades?
It will allow us to upgrade.
Gotcha.
Because the key is, you don't have enough electrical power.
Right, right.
The lines were bad.
You can't put anything new.
Completely.
Okay.
And it'll be addressing most of those issues. The key infrastructure is going to be in place.
Okay.
So was that underlying electrical infrastructure is what got us from the original talk of a few hundred thousand to where we are now?
Correct. Because initially, we thought that we could just spend the money on the equipment and make it tie in with the existing electrical. But the feedback that we got and the assessment that was done showed that the electrical system wasn't really in good shape. And we had cloth wrap wiring in there, which is, you know, 80, 90 years old, which really needs to be, it's a fire hazard in many respects. It has to be addressed now.
And I'll just say, we've been talking about this project really for a while, and that was even just talking to the users of the Auditorium Band Orchestra, the Fall Play and Musical, and that was one of their comments, was, we don't think it's just our equipment. You know, we think there's something more to this. So appreciate the investigation that went into figuring out the work that needs to be done.
And we also had the grants, if you recall, from last year. We'd used that money very efficiently to pay our service fee, for example. Part of DLA's, we came out of that, so.
Great.
Do you have anything further? Are we ready to vote?
Yep.
All right. Kathy, can you call the roll?
Ms. Murphy?
Aye.
Mr. Marhol?
Aye.
Mr. Muirhead?
Aye.
Ms. Gunn?
Aye.
Ms. Fieber?
Aye.
Mr. Hunt?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you, Remesh.
Yeah, thank you.
Yes, thank you. Let's see, that brings us then to committee reports. First committee listed is Education.
Yeah, I mean, we, today, Angela's going to join us, like looking for her, for our annual student achievement report, so we invite you to the table.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. I was just saying to the leadership team, it's my favorite time of the year to talk about student achievement. So tonight, we're going to talk about student achievement in District 96, looking at achievement over the time, over the past few years, and specifically over last year, looking at last year's data. We'll talk about the investments we've made as a district towards learning recovery, state report card updates, we'll celebrate some successes, talk about further areas for growth, and then also talk about our next steps. When we talk about investments towards learning recovery, these are the things that you, as school board members, have supported us in putting into place so that we can continue to work with our students and work towards learning recovery following the pandemic and providing that high academic rigor that we all want here in District 96. So those investments, some of those investments include the implementation of full-day kindergarten, the additional .5 FTE for an elementary math interventionist, continuing to refine the multi-tiered system of support process, our MTSS process. We've adopted a new elementary math curricular resource. We're continuing our work with the Metro Chicago Mathematics Initiative coaching at the elementary level, which is helping us this year with implementing our new math curricular resource. Our reading specialists have been attending reading workshops focused on the science of reading, and will be doing some professional learning work with our staff members on what they've been learning in those workshops. We added an additional 1.0 FTE for elementary music, art, and PE teachers, which has allowed us to increase collaborative plan time and also has allowed us to continue focusing on small group instruction. So while our classroom teachers are also, are doing small group instruction in classes, with some of the time that our elementary music, art, and PE teachers have when they're not teaching their classes, they're going into classes and assisting with interventions as well, whether it's academic or social-emotional interventions. And then we have the addition of the instructional coaching program with Morella Harrington and Sarah Hickey as our instructional coaches. With the state report card, every year, we know that there are some changes to the state report card. This year, some of those changes include, science proficiency has been removed from the state report card. It's only removed for this year. Next year, it will go back as one of the indicators for the state report card. This year, instead of science proficiency, we're looking at science participation. And our science participation rate in the spring of '22 was 99.5%. So we received all the points possible on the state report card for our science participation. Because of the pandemic and emergency learning, the state was not issuing annual summative designations, and they haven't issued them since the 2019 report card. So those are returning this year. And now you'll see an annual summative designation for all of our schools in the district. And then things that are new for the state report card, this year, the state has added the Equity Journey Continuum, which is an informational tool that uses data that's been published. So when you go to the state report cards, you'll see data, you'll see an Equity Journey Continuum that reflects data from the 2018-19 school year, because that was the last time data hadn't been impacted by the pandemic. And so that published data is used to support conversations for districts to discuss equity and discuss where districts might need to focus work on closing various gaps. So when you look at the state report card, you'll see metrics for student learning, you'll see metrics for elevating educators, and then you'll see metrics for the learning environment. And in those three goal areas, what we've seen, the data show, is that most of our English learner students are making on-target annual progress towards proficiency. And our student discipline metrics indicate minimal gaps between our special population groups. So those would be students with IUPs, free and reduced lunch students, as well as our English learner students. So there are minimal gaps between special population groups and non-special population groups when we're looking at discipline metrics. There's also minimal gaps between white students and non-white students when looking at discipline metrics. Some of the areas for growth when we dig into our Equity Journey Continuum, one thing that we notice is that while, as we've dug into the Equity Journey Continuum data, we've noticed that there appears to be some discrepancies in how districts are reporting students who are enrolled and passing Algebra I. Okay, so if you go and you compare various districts' percentage of students who are passing Algebra I, you would see on the report card different measures, some reporting high percentages, some reporting low percentages. So one area for growth is that we are, I am going to work on determining how districts, our neighboring districts are reporting that, so that we can at least be consistent with neighboring districts as well. But what it did point out when digging into the data is that we had in 2018-19, 42 students who were enrolled in Algebra I. Out of those 42, all 42 passed. But what it pointed out is that we need to explore how to offer more opportunities for students to have access to Algebra I. Currently, our Algebra I programming is part of our advanced math programming, so if you're on an advanced math track, then by eighth grade, you will have, you'll be in the Algebra I course. If you're not in the advanced math track, then you're not in an Algebra I course. So what Ms. May, Mr. Havalis, Dr. Ryan Toye and I are talking about is how can we open up opportunities to students beyond the advanced placement courses. Another area for growth is that we will continue to work on the proficiency of all of our students on state assessments. And by working on proficiency of all of our students, we're focused on everyone, because we know that we want all of our students to grow, but we'll also be able to then address our subgroups, which is part of our strategic plan goals as well. Another piece that's new on the state report card are teacher endorsements, so teachers with National Board certification and teachers with gifted endorsement. So you would see that when you go to the state report card as well.
I'm sorry, before we leave that slide, I'm wondering about that first bullet point, though, if I could ask, I'm sorry to interrupt. So, science participation as opposed to proficiency?
Correct.
So is that just kind of a pandemic thing for fear that the numbers would be really bad if we said proficient?
Not for fear they'd be bad. The state feels that it's not an accurate, it's not an accurate measure because of the way the assessment was given, coming off of the pandemic last year.
So what does participation mean exactly?
How many students actually took the tests out of how many students you have enrolled in fifth and eighth grade. It's only fifth and eighth graders that take the science assessment, and so they look at the percentage of students who took the test out of the percentage of students who were eligible to take it.
Just took the assessment test?
Yep. Who took, so now you...
Is there a reason, is there a reason why someone wouldn't take that test, then?
Some students, and we don't have this situation here, but in some districts, some students do refuse to take a state assessment. And then there may be students who just were absent and were not available during the two-week period. Given the pandemic, some students may have missed it because of COVID isolation, so there's a variety of reasons why students may not take the assessment. It's not as big of a concern here in Riverside as it's been in some other districts.
Just, I guess, off the top of my head, that sounds like a pretty, not, a very worthwhile statistic.
For us?
Yeah.
It's, it's kind of, it's not kind of, it's a non-issue for us. Most of our students take our assessment, except for those few situations where they may not have been present during the testing time. But if you were to dig deeper into other districts' data, you'll see that there are districts that have trouble with participation rates.
So it's not so much about science as participation in the testing program?
For the 2022 report card.
Sure.
Next year, it will go back to proficiency, and it will be about science and science instruction and learning.
And I don't want to speak for the people that wrote it, but I would imagine that science was taught differently during the pandemic without all the, whether it's laboratory or hands-on activity, and so to connect the assessment to work that was done in a totally different way doesn't seem logical to me personally.
Absolutely.
Like, my daughter took chemistry without being in the chemistry lab. That's interesting.
Right.
Gotcha.
All right. So as I said, one of the things that's returning is the annual summative designations. And so what comprises the annual summative designations for schools? This wheel shows us that the state places an emphasis on academic factors, because you can see in the blue, 75% of the designations determined by academic factors. The yellow are climate and culture factors, so 25% of the designations determined by climate and culture. Growth plays a largest role in the summative designations. So schools that have high growth, 50% of their designation points come from those high-growth numbers. And then you can see proficiency is 15%, seven and a half for math, seven and a half for ELA of the summative designation. 5% is that science participation. So if you had 95% or more participate, you got all the points available, and then if you had certain ranges after that, you had points deducted. And then 5% is our English learner progress to proficiency. And then 20% comes from chronic absenteeism, which is students who have 10% or more absences in the school year. So for us, that'd be 18 or more absences in the school year. And then 5% of it comes from our Five Essentials survey. And so the state takes all these calculations, all these numbers, and puts a summative, puts a summative total, puts a summative number on, for each school, and then they list the schools in order from highest score to lowest score, and that then leads to those summative designations that we know of exemplary, commendable, targeted, and comprehensive. And so the difference between, as you can see up here, we have one school that was exemplary and four, the other four were commendable. The difference between exemplary and commendable is simply that exemplary schools were in the top 10% of all the schools in the state of Illinois, and commendable were not in the top 10%. To be exemplary or commendable, you had to have no underperforming subgroups that had a score at or below the bottom 5% of the schools listed in the state. So they look at the bottom 5% of the schools, they look at their total proficiency rate or growth rate, and then they compare every subgroup to those bottom 5%. And if you have none that are below that, then you're going to be commendable, but if you're in the top 10%, you're exemplary.
I don't know that it said, what was the exemplary school?
Hollywood Elementary School is the exemplary school.
Oh, yeah, I should have did say that, I think. Is there, is that kind of in line with previous years, or it seems like previous years we've had two or three?
Yeah, so it's, you're absolutely right. Previous years, we've had two or three that were exemplary. It's bounced between different schools that have been exemplary, so it's not, it's not, it hasn't always been Hollywood.
What student mobility, sorry, you might have mentioned?
I didn't.
Or maybe we're going to, so...
Student mobility is just the movement rate, students moving in and out of the district, so we have a low mobility rate.
What's a high mobility rate?
Honestly, I've never worked in a district with a high mobility rate, so I'm not sure. Dr. Ryan Toye, would you know?
I don't. I can take some guesses and do a little informal research while Angela's talking.
Well, can I put you on the spot and say, what have you seen in the places you've worked at?
Numbers like this, below 5%.
Thank you.
This is a snapshot of our report card. If you go to the state report card website, it's illinoreportcard.com. If you go to that website and you look up our school district, you would see, this is the first page that comes up, it's a snapshot of Riverside's district. And then there are links where you can click to dig deeper on any and all of these. When you go to illinoreportcard.com, things that you would see on the report card include academic proficiency and growth on state assessments, that eighth graders passing Algebra I designation. And again, what we've learned this year is that school districts are reporting this differently, so we're going to dig into how the state's looking for it to be reported, if we need to change the way we're reporting it, if other districts might need to do it, and we're going to explore that a little bit more so that that number's more accurate and representative of what Riverside offers. The Equity Journey Continuum results are on the state report card, district environment data, demographics for students, teachers, administrators, and then the accountability ratings for all the schools.
Angela, what's the, sorry, on the slide before, the chronic, like absenteeism percentage of 14, is that, I guess, fairly consistent with where we've been in? What counts?
It seems high, yeah.
If you're out for the five days that you're quarantined or COVID, or is it excused versus unexcused? Like, 18 days ap, like, that just seems like a lot of kids being out 18 days, and I'm wondering what factors, which of the 18 days?
So we were talking about that today as a leadership team. We think that COVID played a role in some of those absenteeism pieces. It is higher than what's normal for Riverside, but in looking at comparisons with our other feeder schools and with RV, it's online with the other districts that we are nearby with. And we really think that a lot of that has to do with the pandemic. It's a, it's less than 5% higher than 2019. And I only know that because absent, chronic absenteeism is part of the designation, so I was looking at how our points figured, and we ended up with a certain amount of points because, yes, it was higher than 2019, but it was less than 5% higher.
And Angela said it's absences for any reason, so even excused absence would account. But what we were talking about today, and it seemed to be a conversation among other superintendents, too, that everyone noticed this number was higher, and we make an assumption that it's COVID, but it's one of our leaders was sharing, kids were coded as present, remotely attending, so it's a bit confounding and confusing, but many, many other school districts seem to have a higher-than-typical number there in terms of...
I would imagine the trends this year are not going up to that level.
Let's hope.
That's our hope.
Yeah, that's right. Let's hope that COVID doesn't hit us hard in, you know, in the winter.
So the state average is probably higher than as well?
Yes.
Because it just looks higher than I've seen.
No, that's, that's not normal for us at all.
Yeah, not at all.
And it could be that the parents were sick and couldn't, or caregiver, whoever couldn't make it to school with the kid. And they just said, who knows? I mean...
So we'll look for this a year from now to be lower than 14%.
I don't, I don't want to put the principals on the spot, but does absenteeism seem normal compared to anyone?
For this year?
Yeah, like, if you want to say.
Do any principals want to share?
Compared to pandemic levels? Compared to last year? They don't want to say.
Okay. I will just share that, I mean, we still are publishing our COVID, I was going to call it the COVID report card, it's not the COVID report card, it's our, we still publish that every Friday on our website, and then I still get notifications from the nurses, and I will say, it just feels like we've gotten a few more than usual this week. So, no.
Anyway, I won't make it up.
But very anecdotal, so.
I think, I think what, in terms of like, I would look at some families that had challenges with consistent attendance, whether old or younger, or the same family that had challenges getting attendance. The pandemic probably pushed those numbers out of sorts just because of all the mitigating factors that just went along with it, but we know who we're, have eyes on and make sure that we're working with to try to get those kids in school as much as we can, but we also have a limit to what we can do to get them.
Oh, totally, yeah. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gatz. So some of our student achievement successes. All five schools are exemplary or commendable. Our NWA map, math, and reading growth scores have increased. Our NWA map, math achievement, specifically in third grade, has moved back in the 90s, which most other grades are in the 80s, a couple are in 70s, 74 and 77, but to see our third-grade achievement back in the 90s is getting closer to those pre-pandemic levels. A few grade levels are demonstrating pre-pandemic achievement scores, specifically third and sixth grade in reading. And then most cohorts have shown map, math achievement growth since last fall. And overall, our IAR proficiency has grown since the spring '21 administration in both reading and math. So now some data. What would a student achievement report be without some graphs? So first, what we have here is our fall-to-spring math growth. And so what this graph replaces is that bar graph that you would always see that had the diamonds in it. So instead of that graph with the diamonds, we have bar graphs, and then the purple line represents that diamond used to see a projected growth. And so this graph is looking at growth in math from fall of 2021 to spring of '22. As I said, the purple line represents the projected growth for that grade level for the '21-'22 year. And what we see is that we have high math growth from fall of '21 to spring of '22. Then with...
I'm sorry, just a quick question.
Yeah.
In terms of projected growth, so that is something...
In terms of projected growth, so that is something the state sets, or this is a trend?
This is, NWA map testing sets projected growth rates for students based off of their scores at given times that they take the assessment. So, it's not, it's not the state, it's the map testing.
Right, I guess my question is, is, I'm just wondering, who is, who's setting that purple bar? Is that the statistic trend we would expect to see? Or is that, you know, this is the requirement, or this is where we would expect things to be?
So.
Go ahead.
NWA measures of academic progress. They've run statistical reports over a five-year period previously, prior to the pandemic. And they look at, based on student scores at fall administration, winter administration, and spring administration, where should students grow with a certain amount of instructional weeks? And so, based off that, if a student scores at, like, the ninety-third percentile, they might have a projected growth of maybe five RIT points, six RIT points. And so, they look at that. And then NWA map takes all of the students at a grade level and averages what should be the average growth for that grade level based on the average scores of those students.
Okay.
Does that answer your question?
It does.
Okay, perfect.
I'll just take that a step further, because I was struggling with this a little earlier too. The, the purple bar is where they expected them to be. And so, when we are higher than that bar, we had done, like, I just was surprised at how much higher that really was. And so, I thought I was reading it wrong.
No, you weren't.
No, but it's nice to see.
Very excitedly, you were reading it right.
Yeah.
Good, and we won't get too excited.
No, I think it's nice to see at least even that sixth grade at the bar. As we know, sixth grade is a challenging exam transition, so.
Right, we talk about that every year.
Every year we talk about that.
Is it the testing, is it that we switch from one test to another? Is it curriculum? We always have that conversation. And yes, for, from last fall to spring, everybody met or exceeded their projected growth in math.
And I think, like, is it surprising to you how much growth, or how much, like, the comparison to last year? Like, a lot of the grades seem to have done significantly better. So, does that reflect a, a good bounce back?
It was not surprising to me. It felt good because we had placed an emphasis on math, right? So, we had looked at increasing that math interventions position at the elementary level. We were working on increasing the resources that staff members had. We had, at the junior high level, increased the minutes for math instruction from the hybrid remote year to the year following that. And so, just getting back into school and not having hybrid remote, having students there for the full time, it, it feels right that we should see that high growth.
Okay.
But some of it though, perhaps, has bounced back to where we previously would have had a deficit from the pandemic years that, some of that is just, it's, it's good that we're catching up. But it's probably higher that we're seeing this year than we'll see in future years, I would guess.
It could be higher, but as we talked about as a leadership team, we actually need it to be higher. Because as we'll see in a couple of slides, our achievement in math is not at pre-pandemic levels. So, we need that growth to be higher than what it has been pre-pandemic so that we can start closing that gap between pre-pandemic and now. So, the same graph for reading. You see here that the growth is not as high as it was for math. But we continue to work on reading. You see high reading growth in our primary grades. There is much higher growth in sixth grade than it was in last year. Last year, we had saw negative growth over the course of the year. So, we have this positive growth now at a higher level. And we just, what this shows is that we've got to increase our growth here also so that we can get to those pre-pandemic numbers as well.
Is there also something about reading itself? That it seems like there's much more growth in the younger grades? And it's, it tapers off a fair amount as we get older?
That's what the reading specialist and I were actually talking about today. We happen to have Wednesday meetings, and so, it just worked out nicely that I had it before today's meeting. But, you know, at the primary levels, we focus so much on learning to read. And then as students get older, we're working on reading to learn. And so, what the reading specialist and I were talking about today is that in our focus on comprehension, we might be losing some of those other reading skills like vocabulary and word attack. And those are areas that we're going to have to look at and start to focus on as well. And so, the workshops that they've been attending that I had mentioned in the beginning have, have ideas and suggestions on not just primary reading instruction, but also intermediate reading instruction. And that's some of the stuff that we're working on bringing back to the teachers.
Thank you.
Yeah. So, this is growth, but we also want to look at achievement. And so, this graph looks at math achievement on the map test over the course of the past five years. There is not a math, spring math achievement bar for the 2019-'20 year because we didn't take the map test in the spring of 2020, because that was during the emergency learning. And what we can see is that our achievement is not at pre-pandemic levels. That's what we were just talking about. Our growth in math is high, but our achievement hasn't reached those pre-pandemic levels yet. As I mentioned also earlier, the third-grade spring math achievement is in the nineties. It's getting to that pre-pandemic level, that's great to see. Our sixth-grade achievement is rebounding and working towards pre-pandemic levels. Our fifth-grade math scores are also getting higher when you compare math to reading in fifth grade. Math is higher at the fifth-grade level. But what we can also see here is that there's a decline from that, that pre-pandemic time. And that's to be expected. And we knew that we wouldn't close the gap within a year or two. But it just tells us where we're at and the work that we need to do so that we can continue to grow. And then this is the same graph for reading. And again, while we're not at pre-pandemic levels, eighth grade has shown an increase towards achievement. And we do have achievement reaching pre-pandemic levels for some grades, specifically third and sixth in reading. And while it's good to look at achievement at a grade level and how are, how are third-grade students doing from year to year to year, it's also good to look at cohort data. So, looking at how students in a cohort are performing as they continue to move up in grade levels. So, we can see here that our third, fourth, and fifth grade cohorts, our current third graders, current fourth graders and fifth graders, are showing increases in their map, math achievement. And while our sixth, seventh, and eighth grade cohorts are showing some decline, they are, they have shown growth since last fall. So, this fall's assessments for each of those current grades are the teal line, the teal bar. And you can see that our seventh and eighth graders grew from last fall. So, we will continue to work on growth for our students. And then the same graph for reading. And this shows that there is, in reading, a slight decline with our fifth through eighth-grade cohorts, so those upper grade levels. And as I said, the reading specialist and I have been talking about that and have some ideas on how we'll bring information back to our staff members so that we can put a focus on that as well.
I'm sorry to do this to you, I was taking some notes. Can you go back a slide? One more. Yeah. I was curious about sixth grade here. It just seems to be a big anomaly on both reading and math, that the achievement is so much higher. Every other grade seems to be kind of in a certain range, either equal or, you know, a little bit better or worse. But like, sixth grade really stands out for both reading and math. Is there anything to that? Kind of to Sherry's comment earlier, I know every year we talk about that sixth-grade transition and all that kind of stuff. So, I was a little surprised to see that the achievement was so much higher for that particular grade.
I was wondering, not necessarily the same thing, but I was wondering what happened last year that their achievement went, increased so much from the 2021 year?
Yeah. Because looking prior, it's back to where it was prior.
Right.
Yeah, okay.
And so, those are conversations that Mrs. May and Mr. Havallis and I will have when we have our monthly meetings to see what it could be that caused that. We have worked on small group instruction at, in both math and ELA. And so, what small group instruction is happening at sixth grade in ELA class, what instruction's happening with our curricular resource in the ELA class so that we can work on duplicating those measures, those practices for our subsequent years.
Okay.
I mean, do you just think it has to do with that math talk that happens in person? That during the pandemic, they weren't doing as mu, I mean, I'm sure they did some. But to have that extra double block where you're with the people, working on problems, like, it had to have made a difference. I'm not going to speak for the math teachers there, but I don't.
Yeah, I think that helps with math.
The reading, I don't know.
With reading, yeah. Those are definitely conversations I'm looking forward to.
Yeah, that's a good question.
Mrs. May and Mr. Havallis.
It's a good reframe, though. Like, my benchmark was looking at last year, but if I look back prior years, pre-pandemic, it's, we're back to where we were. So, yeah, the anomaly year is really last year, not this year being better, it's last year being lower.
Right, right.
I, I kind of remember a previous conversation about sixth grade being a transition year for, you know, and then especially when you're talking about pandemic, when you're hybrid, or a lot of the year just fully remote, that's, could have that big impact. And when you're back into a more traditional setting, then you're getting that benefit that you didn't have previously.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Okay. So, this is an IRR. This is our longitudinal IAR proficiency graph. And this one's for math. And so, I'm just going to talk a little bit about what we see here, like, what the graph is showing. First, it includes the sixteen West Suribin Consortium of Academic Excellent Districts, or Whiskey districts that we often compare ourselves to. The other fifteen districts are blocked out so that we're not calling attention to other districts, possibly before they even have a chance to talk about their data with their boards. So, you see here Riverside's data, we aren't blocked out, you can see where we are. But what this offers us is a comparison on how are other districts, how are we doing in comparison to other districts? And specifically to other districts that we often compare ourselves to. The red line you see across the IAR graphs is the score for our Spring '22 administration. And that red line is there for comparison so that when you're looking at other districts, you can see how they compare to our Spring '22 administration. So, when we look at our IAR data, we can see that in math, we have grown since last year. Where we've had about seven percent more students demonstrate proficiency in our math IAR assessment. And we are not at our pre-pandemic numbers, but we are working towards them. You can see that there are some districts that are getting closer to their pre-pandemic numbers. I think two districts on this chart have rebounded close to their pre-pandemic numbers. So, it's possible, and it's great that these are Whiskey districts. And I do have relationships with curriculum directors in other districts so that I'm able to talk with them about what are the things that they're doing, what interventions might they be providing, to see how we can continue to work to grow in Riverside.
My guess is that you probably have decent ideas on who those higher spikes are. So, I'm, I'm just wondering, you know, I guess in terms of looking comparison sake, we're definitely pretty high up there. Maybe, you know, there, there are three or four districts you could say definitively are doing head and shoulders above us in, in terms of this view. And I guess I'm just wondering, and I'm sure we've been down this road before, but I do wonder, what are they doing that we're not?
And so, those are conversations that I'll have. Since the data was just released, you know, we haven't had a chance to really talk with each other about it. But those are conversations that I look forward to having with our, with my counterparts. So, I don't have an answer yet, but we'll be working on that.
Okay.
And then we have the same graph from ELA. And here, you can again see that we're slightly higher than we were in the spring of '21. This time, about 1.7 percent more students demonstrated proficiency. Our ELA scores and our math scores for proficiency are about equal. Just slightly more than half of our students are showing proficiency. And so, you know, obviously, our goal is to increase that number for our Spring '23 administration. And part of that will come with conversations with building principals and digging it deeper to individual building data, as well as, again, looking at where we should be focusing when we're looking at our curricular resources. And then the same graph for science. This is for proficiency, so this is how we're performing in science. And the thing that, to notice here, is that our science score is declining slightly, even from before the pandemic. Part of that is during the pandemic, science instruction took a hit. Kind of to what Sherry was saying, we weren't able to do the types of labs and discussions and the conversations with science. You might remember, like, students had asynchronous work for science when we had the half-day instruction. And when we were hybrid and remote, if you're in a remote class, having science instruction is a little bit more difficult. And the science assessment is taken at fifth and eighth grade, but it's looked at standards across grade levels. It's not just standards in fifth grade. So, our fifth graders last year took that assessment. But it's over science learning that they would have done in fourth and third grade and second grade as well.
Is it tied to informational text comprehension, do you think?
So, our areas for continued focus. We want to continue to focus on students exceeding their math growth projections in both reading and math. We want to play, specific focus, place specific focus on identified math areas to increase achievement scores in both reading and math. We're going to work on increasing emphasis on our reading strategies and skills and working towards, continuing to work towards our pre-pandemic levels on our IAR reading and math scores. Which means our next steps are continued focus on equity and opportunities, which is part of, is one of our strategies, in goal one of our strategic plan. We're going to continue our tier-one support with our new elementary math resource, curriculum resource, with Full Day Kindergarten. We have reconvened our Full Day Kindergarten team so that we are talking about what's working, where are we having some challenges, how can we problem-solve challenges together. Small group instruction will continue to be a focus as well. We'll continue to refine the MTSS process. As I said, I'll be digging with the principals into their building and grade-level data for IAR so we can determine what specific areas of focus are needed for instruction. And then an ongoing analysis of our subgroup data to determine appropriate supports. And we are currently exploring our science curricular resources so that we can work on addressing the science proficiency scores as well.
So, how is Full Day Kindergarten going, by the way?
Full Day Kindergarten's going wonderful. We had our first Full Day Kindergarten action team meeting last week. And we talked, like I said, we talked about what's working well and, as well as some of the challenges. And the first thing all of them said is the gift of time has been great. And the way it's been great is that the students have time to really dig into different curricular areas. That they've been able to do math centers, and that was not something they were able to do. The play-based part has been wonderful. All of them said that they are surprised that when it comes time for, like, center, play-based center time, they will often pull out whiteboards and recreate things they had learned earlier in the day. So, they might, like, do, Ms. Sula was saying that they do tallies, tally votes. And so, she had noticed some of the kids in her centers, like, what's your favorite fruit? And they were walking around tallying votes and then counting those tallies. So, the things they're doing in class, they're now able to see. Because of the gift of time, they're able to see the kids doing it in play. But then also, they're able to work on social emotional concerns too. So, in half-day kindergarten, when certain situations arose, they didn't have a lot of time to address it and talk about problem-solving and working together on it, and how can you solve this for yourself, and building those skills in students because it was on to the next thing. But what they've noticed with the gift of time is just being able to work on problem-solving. One of the teachers had said she had a little girl in her class who would just get really angry right away if something didn't go the way she had wanted. And she would always clench her fist and get really red. And then just recently, and they would work with her and talk about using her words and explaining what's wrong. And recently, a kid had come and had come to her really loud and told her really loud to use some crayon or some marker. It was really loud, and the little girl goes, "I don't like when you yell at me." And he's like, "Well, I didn't yell." So, then they talked about, like, loud voices and soft voices. But they're just able to, with the gift of time, they've been able to do so much more just in these first few months of school, and they've all noticed it. And all of them, all the teachers who do not have a half-day student said that they feel less rushed. Because if they don't get to something right away in the morning, they know that they can come back to it during center time in the afternoon, or they can address it coming up on another day. And I say the teachers who don't have a half-day student because ones that do have a half-day student in their class said. student, because ones that do have a half-day student in their class said they still feel rushed, because they've got to get everything in before that kid goes home. So.
Still have the same number of half-day that?
Yeah.
Yeah, there's only, like, three classes that have, there's three teachers, because it's in three different schools, who feel that rush feeling. And six who are like, oh, sorry, we're great. So it's going well, to answer your question. And then there's just the normal challenges of, it's a longer day. And just working on younger kids figuring out that longer day.
Definitely ramp-up observed at my house.
At some schools, lunch has been great. At some schools, lunch is a little bit harder, because it's a little bit more unstructured. And so, you know, having those unstructured times is something that the schools and the principals and teachers continue to work on, too.
Well, my daughter's a fifth grader, and she just loves having those kindergartners around, because she, they do, like, the buddies and the reading. And perhaps they have a lot more, maybe they've always done that even with half-day, but I think now there's more opportunities for that. And then some of them participate now in aftercare, so I think she thinks that she's their aftercare account, their babysitter in aftercare. She's in an aftercare, so I don't think it's endearing for the older kids as well to have them around all day.
I agree.
I'll just add one other thing about the gift of time. Certainly, we heard that about kindergarten, but even when we look back to the pandemic year scores, it was feedback we got from our teachers across the grade level that we were tight. As you know about instructional time, we had the group that came in the morning, and then we, you know, we prioritized core instruction, which was great, but kids didn't have that same time. So we kind of forget that part, that we were good. We taught, you know, reading, writing, mathematics, and we really prioritized that. But they didn't have, you know, as kids get older, it's not necessarily play in the same way, but it's sort of practicing on those skills. So it's a reflection I've definitely heard from teachers.
And that's, yes, at the older level, we see that. And we're working on social emotional skills at all grade levels, not just teaching them to kindergarten, first graders, but also, our older kids miss some of those skills, too, because of that lack of time.
I was at a Halloween party on Saturday, and then just walking around for trick-or-treating, I probably talked to four or five different families that have a kindergartner at different schools, and it was all just glowing feedback. And I don't have any specific examples, like what you gave, but just the kids really like being there, and they like being with their friends, and like, in this environment. And everything seems to be going really well. They're really appreciating the teacher. So just generally, really positive feedback that I've heard. I don't know if anybody else has heard anything, but just happened to come up in some conversations over the weekend. So, good to hear.
Thank you.
Any other questions about student achievement, or anything that plays a role in student achievement? Just about anything.
Just a very general question on all of the stuff that we did last year to prep for math. And then for reading, like, we need to focus there. Do you have any initial thought? Like, do you feel that, we did a lot with math. Do you feel that that same level of attention is needed for reading?
And so that was part of our conversation with reading specialists. We do feel that a lot of focus has been placed on math, and in some ways, reading got not really left behind.
We're fine, let's focus here.
Right. And at the time, our reading scores were higher than our math scores, so we knew we needed to put a focus on math. So, yes, we need to increase the focus on reading while still holding strong to math as well. And so that's where the reading specialist and I are looking at, what information do we need to work with, with the teachers? We are also going to dig into the I A R and math data to see where the weaker areas are, and then cross-reference it to our E L A curriculum resources, to see if it's gaps in the resources, or if there are just instructional strategies that we need to work on.
So you don't know?
Not yet. But I'm working on it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
That's all for us.
All right. So that will take us to facilities.
Not a lot to report. We just obviously approved the bids for the auditorium. We have a meeting next week. And then we will be receiving bids for Blythe.
Bringing those to the December Board of Education.
I didn't think it was November still, but my timeline is messed up in my head. So, yes.
We've been back and forth on it a few times, so, yeah, December. So do we push that back, too? I'm looking at my notes.
Weren't we originally supposed to be doing this last month?
This was specific.
This month? So did we push that one back, too?
No, I don't believe, this one might have been, sorry, Blythe might have been end of November rather than December, but it was always towards the end of the year.
Okay.
Auditorium, we pushed out a little bit to make sure that we got a sufficient number of bids.
Yeah, I have it listed for December, a regular Board of Education meeting, the bid approval for Blythe.
All right. Thanks, Joel. And then next up is Policy Committee.
Okay, yes. So I will be attending the I A S B annual meeting and delegate assembly coming up November 15th and 19th. And so every district is entitled to one voting delegate. So I believe that is me this year. That will be me this year. So thank you, Kathy, for registering me. This is not something that I've done before. I know there's some sort of pre-delegate assembly information webinar happening tomorrow that I'm hoping to try to attend, just to kind of get my bearings. And just, you know, for anybody that might be listening, these are not, like, policies that, like, we are adopting or anything like that. Just member districts are giving direction to, you know, I A S B that represents our interests and kind of before national policymakers. So it just kind of sets the course for legislative initiatives. And so I, as I understand it, the delegate would vote on, you know, the election of officers, I A S B officers, constitutional amendments, and then, like, position statements. So they have new resolutions that they put forth, amending some existing positions, and then, I believe, yeah, current position statements. And then the recommendation committee provides their suggestion to support or oppose the resolution. So I'm not sure what the best way to go about discussing it. I don't know if we vote on every single one, if they're not, if they don't feel as pertinent, or if you have to, or do you just vote on the ones that matter to us?
You don't have to. It's just an enormous room with a lot, you know, a lot of people. And then you're like, right.
There's a new clicker. There's a new clicky thing.
They used to literally do, like, this and go around and count.
There's some new electronic system of yes, no.
And I would say.
They use Kahoot.
I would say most people in the room are voting on each one, but however, you don't have, if it's something that has nothing to do with us.
Yeah, right, like this firearm dealers.
Yeah, I don't know. I guess if there were anywhere, your thoughts differed from that of the Resolution Committee's recommendation to adopt or not.
I went through them, and I felt like the recommendations were what I would lean towards. So I, the only one that even interested me was the number seven, the mandate review, no, the number eight, financial contributions for school board elections, ensuring that it remains nonpartisan, which I firmly support. So I supported that one, or I support that one. The other ones, quite honestly, don't feel like they have a big impact on us in any way.
No.
I think the first one could benefit us as well, right?
Right.
With the three, the ratio, the million ratio, to allow for more, like, project, further out projections, not be penalized.
So what was it? I think it was number six, one that was kind of puzzled me.
The safety button?
I'm looking at the right one. No, this was the one, it seemed like, it's, and it's hard to tell sometimes how these are worded. It seemed like the thrust of the resolution was to make things less partisan, or to more nonpartisan.
Oh, yeah.
But was that eight, or is this?
I can't remember which one was in.
No, six is in there, too.
Six is.
Yeah, I think, and the recommendation was not to adopt it, thinking that the wording that's already there is sufficient, and perhaps it is. I'm not far from an expert in any of this. But that was the only deviation that I had from the recommendations. That's only a potential deviation.
Well, this one was saying that, this is the opposite, where it was, not the opposite, but it's talking about, I'm just trying to read it to make sure I'm talking. That we should be actively participating in the legislative process as it relates to school board operations. So it's.
Well, sorry, number six was, the existing position is to definitely support candidates who are basically supporting the I A S B position, whereas the change was to make it a little bit more neutral.
I guess that's, in this environment, that's where I'm all at. I'm all for neutrality. And maybe that's the idea, is that they're looking, they're looking for people who support the I A S B position. And maybe that rationale, I can understand.
Yeah, I A S B position is, it's got a clear agenda, and that's what it's, the organization is designed to do. So.
I just think it's, especially this board being nonpartisan, the last thing on earth we should be doing is endorsing one candidate or one party or another.
No, I totally agree with that. It doesn't seem right for us as a district.
Well, that was, that was only my thought there. And if it's the idea that it's, they would like the ability or like the space for us to endorse candidates who push or who favor the I A S B line, perhaps there's, I could see why some people might want to do that. I still honestly would not feel comfortable with it.
I'm in agreement with you, Dan. I think the neutrality change is probably better overall.
So it's this one that perhaps, what's our next meeting, the 16th?
We could revisit it.
We can revisit this one to see how we would want to advise your delegate, me, to vote, because it might not be aligned with the Resolution Committee's recommendation. I don't, like, I could be persuaded either way. So I appreciate you all thinking through, because I certainly picked up on that with number eight, but I could see how that same rationale for eight now applies to six as well, based on what you all have brought forth in the conversation tonight.
And just to note, school board elections are supposed to be nonpartisan in general. That's why they're not occurring during, at next week.
That's right.
That's the whole point in trying of removing that election cycle of local boards and local municipalities away from things where there are primaries and parties and those aspects of politics.
But the rest, it sounds like the board sort of aligns with the Resolution Committee's recommendations to adopt or not. But maybe we can revisit that one specifically, so I have clear direction going in on the 19th.
The language for how the Resolutions Committee is very vague, like, why they're saying do not adopt. If you read it, it's like.
Yeah, we think the language is fine.
We read it, and we don't support it.
We don't support it, because we think it's fine. I mean, it's an amendment, it's not a new position, so maybe they don't need to provide as much. But, yeah, we have an interest in it.
All right.
Yeah, I don't have anything further unless you all had more.
See in an email or something that a big stack of policies is coming or something?
Yeah, no, that's just my, my holiday gift.
Oh, I did have one comment. I had asked Angela, because the Equity Journey Continue was on the Student Achievement Report, and it's on the report card now, that maybe that might be, I'm not going to dictate your conference date, but if there was an equity seminar, that might be something that would be useful, because it talks, there's one that talks about data usage and equity journeys. And I know we'll be doing that. Angela was kind enough to give her feedback on a couple of the different topics and.
Yeah, I was telling Martha and Kathy when I was registering, that the selection was a little overwhelming.
Yes.
I've been to many professional conferences, and there's maybe like two or three breakouts you get to choose from, and you can swap notes with your colleague. And this has, like, 15 things at any given hour. So I'm like, wow, how do you really parse that down and select? And so there is included in the, in the conference, I believe, one that has that. And then there's a separate, like, pre-conference one that you would pay an additional fee for. But that one, just based on the time, it's a Friday. I don't know that I can attend.
Yeah, I wasn't sure about the timing.
But I think the other ones, the ones that come or included with it, I was inclined to perhaps attend. And if there are any others that are of interest, you know.
That was just one that, because it's new to the report card, and it's new on our strategic plan, that it wouldn't hurt to see what they're recommending for the data usage, because it's new.
A session I would just naturally gravitate to.
It's your time, it's your schedule, so I'm not going to dictate what you attend. So thank you, Angela, for the feedback. Thanks.
Proceed like that. And if I learn anything, if I'm able to attend tomorrow night's webinar and I learn anything, I'll bring it to our next board meeting.
Looking forward to hearing on that.
Yeah, and wait for the press update.
Yeah, right.
I don't know if they mean big, like, a one big, like, issue, or just another really fat stack of multiple random updates, or if it's like something that's, I don't know. To be determined.
I'll have the disco ball in hand for that topic. All right. So next, that takes us to Finance Committee, with David or Jim not being present.
All right, David and Jim are both out. So I will just take a minute. You have an overview here of the proposed school fees, or really, it's not proposed school fees, it's a range of considerations for school fees. This is not an action item for tonight, but the Board of Education does annually approve school fees. So just delineated here by Jim, we've often used CPI as the number, and then with kind of a rounding factor, rounding out the number. So with this being a high CPI year, we did list the number of seven percent. There's also a scenario with looking at 5%, another one looking at 3%. So I wanted the board to have all that information for consideration for the coming school year. We do have early learners registration that happens in January, I believe. So that is a number that we like to have. That's why we sort of establish our fees as early as we do. And then actually, by February, we're enrolling our kindergarten students and other students. So it does start to all happen pretty quickly here. I don't know if there's any discussion or feedback that we would then share with David and with Jim.
Really, just eyeballing the chart, I mean, there are some that are going up five under different scenarios that don't go up at all under others. I think really, I guess the pre-K tuition is the only one where there's real numbers, or, you know, a significant amount that's different between the different options.
Because of the rounding factors.
Right.
A lot of it's rounding. I would tend to lean toward.
We've talked about this for years. I guess one of my personal goals was just not to surprise families in an extreme way. We want it to feel, obviously, we want it to match some of our expenses, but I don't want to make it a burden for people to be surprised to, you know. But, yeah, you're right, it's 7% year, I mean.
Yeah, I mean, it's, well, it's 7% year, and obviously, it's impacting a lot of people.
Yeah.
It's, the question, I would wonder, though, are costs necessarily going up to that same 7%? Is it more, is it less? And in particular, I guess the pre-K tuition might be the most sensitive or the most consequential. So that might be, might be good to hear further background on that. Is that really needed, or is it more advisable for us to stagger this increase over time, if that's even possible in this high inflation environment? Because it hasn't stopped.
Right. As we know, our school fees are really just an offset. It's additional revenue that helps us offset other costs. We've tried to sort of look specifically, you know, what is it, our materials? Is it the consumable materials? It's really more of an offset in that, in that general, you know, revenue. So the idea of our costs going up, you know, supplies and materials, perhaps, yes, but hard, hard to say. We don't really have a lot of direct insight on the, you know, materials that need to be replaced. Staff salaries are not changing a lot, because it's in our current R E C agreement. I mean, they're changing, they're going up per the contract, but, but not in that unanticipated way.
Yeah, I think that was, that's kind of hard to tie to this, though, because, I mean, even with 100% of this, it's not.
Yeah. That's why, since this is such a small reflection of our overall budget, I do not feel comfortable doing a 7% personally. That's just my opinion. That's just my opinion. I would. Yeah, that's just my opinion. I, I think going from 195 to 215 in grade eight seems, that seems a lot in real dollars for someone. I don't, I don't support that.
Well, what if you have four kids?
No, right, right. I, I personally think because this is just an offset, it is not calculated based on the supplies that are being used. We don't really have a formula that comes up with this number. I personally would stay at three percent to be in line with the previous years. That's my, that's where my comfort level is.
I was actually leaning towards the five percent because that's how we do the rest of our budget with the P T L caps, which are capped at five percent.
Yeah.
And that's, that, that's just for consistency.
I could, I could support that if that's the way we wanted to go, but I'm kind of leaning towards Linda. This is really kind of an arbitrary. Arbitrary might be a strong word, but it's, it's not really tied directly to any kind of cost. It's like if it's materials, what pens, paper, glue sticks, Kleenexes, whatever.
Energy.
That back at, energy, well.
That goes into, that goes into everything.
Yeah, I don't know. I mean, unless we're going to allocate every dollar to something, I, I don't see how we peg it to anything. So if it's just a general materials offset type thing, like three percent feels.
Well, I mean, now I'm trying to remember, it's been several years now, because I, I think we, we had a conversation at one point that these fees were arbitrary and weren't tied to any real costs. And I believe at the time, there was an idea that we were going to try to tie these more to costs and get them, you know, take them away from just being an arbitrary or a token presence of a fee. I, I definitely hear what everyone's saying here, but if, if that was our, our thought a couple of years ago, I, I am somewhat hesitant to undo that or make, take steps towards undoing that and perhaps I'm wrong in my recollection.
What I recall is that the fees had sort of been left unattended to. So it was that the board would, would examine them annually. But I think when we tried to tie the fee exactly back to the materials that are being purchased on behalf of a student, that became a, a much more complicated, you know, sort of analysis, so.
So we went with the C P I because it wouldn't, because they hadn't been raised for many years. And so in order to, to take away some of the financial burden for the district, but without stressing the families, that is what we chose.
So by policy, we say that the Board of Education annually sets school fees. And so I think we wanted somewhat of a, a process so that it didn't feel.
So it's not arbitrary for everything. At least it was trying to recoup something, but.
Yeah, I mean, I, you know, I don't know if people recall that, then last year, this was something that I, I voted against to increase at all. So absolutely, I would not go for seven or five. And I don't even know that I'd go for three because, I mean, it's not until it's like more directly tied. I understand that the challenges and I don't know why the current numbers just wouldn't continue to work for us. And perhaps it's just because of, you know, my exposure to working at a university. When you charge students book fees, student activity fees, I can tell students exactly where that money is going to and how it is being allocated. And so, and yeah, C P I has always kind of traditionally been in that, you know, two-ish ballpark. So I, yeah.
Yeah, I would, I would be in support of raising it as well.
I, I know we discussed that last year, particularly coming out of, you know, COVID pandemic, increased taxes, all, you know, all of that. I think we even received maybe a public comment in regards to it, but.
Yeah, I, I can't support a zero base just because that's not, that's not the way the world works. I mean, we know that C P I is a thing. Everybody does see it in their grocery bills and everything else they purchase. So I understand the sentiment towards zero, but I can't support it because basically you're shifting costs to somebody else. And I think it is realistic to expect a certain contribution.
Somebody else is taxpayers, though. I mean.
Yes.
It's a different subset of taxpayers.
Right.
This is, it's a much broader base.
You know, the, the whole tax base versus kids with, or, excuse me, families with kids in school. Families with kids in school have a more direct investment, more skin in the game.
This isn't a lot of skin.
It's not a lot of skin.
That's my, this is so little skin.
It is very little, yes.
This is very little and that's.
What I'm, what I'm saying is there, there's more of a reason for, to have, rather than shift that to the whole tax base, than shift it to the folks who are directly benefiting.
Yeah.
I, we're going to shift five percent to everyone across the board in the district. Their property tax bills are going to go up by five percent about on the piece of property tax that they pay for, for District 96.
So I'm going to make a very unhelpful comment. I agree with you that if we're going to increase it, we should increase it relative to something other, some other type of benchmark. I also agree with you that, what you just said. I also agree with you. I struggle with this fee because I don't know where the money goes. So, but unless there's four of us that direct the administration to allocate this to a specific thing, it's just going to be what it is. So if we're going to keep moving with it, then I think we need to keep in, in some incremental fashion, moving it up. But I do struggle if somebody were to ask me, why do you charge me $110 per fourth grader? I don't know. Because that's what we've always done and so that's what we continue to do. And that's not really a good answer.
It's not a good answer.
They include the supplies that you buy for the class.
No, because I buy my own supplies.
Just somewhat, you know, you could say archaic establishes that school districts can levy fees for curricular and extracurricular. So it sort of sets in motion an agreement. And then we have board policy that sets it too. In terms of how the budgeting happens, it comes in as a, a piece of the revenue, right? And I think, Dan, to your point, it's, it's designed to say that like, in addition to taxpayers, people who are actually using the goods and services of the school district pay some additional amount. There are school districts that have done away with fees.
Yeah. I think, and I agree with that too.
Yeah, I do too.
But without being able to say, this is where that money is going, that, that's what I struggle with is where does it go? I don't know. It's just revenue to make you pay more because you use the school and it's, I just struggle with that one. I'm not saying I oppose it. I just struggle with it.
I just think if you look at 2019, grade eight, 185, if we go seven percent, you're up to two, two fifteen, five years later. That just, in real dollars, that just seems like for a public education, that seems very quick growth to me.
Over five years, not really. That's three dollars a year. Or sorry, that's, I, my math is off.
This might just be more of a philosophical debate for me then, because I, I don't believe in public education having large school fees. I just, I think that the whole, there, there's more to it, but anyway, I've already said my, my position.
How would this be presented for a vote? Do we need to decide on the percent first?
Yes, we do.
That's like, I feel like.
Yeah, I think it'll be the interpretation of this conversation. And actually, that was something that David and Jim had talked about was would the board want the administration to make a recommendation? Or, you know, do you, does the board want to consider a range and then agree to the range through a vote? I mean, we can structure the vote any, any of those ways. So this is, this is exactly what committee of the whole is really helpful for is that to have the discussion where there is no specific action being taken tonight.
I mean, I would like a recommendation because I don't know why we charge a pre-K 80 and why we charge an eighth grader 205. Like, I don't, I don't know why we came up with those numbers. I understand how we got there over time, but I don't know how we set that in the first place. So I'll take a recommendation and then just say like, that feels right or doesn't. But without understanding the allocation of those funds, I don't really have a baseline to make a judgment really.
We, we've had.
I would say they're going to curricular materials.
Right. If it's textbooks, obviously, an eighth grader is going to have more materials, different kind of materials. Not necessarily cheaper than, believe it or not, preschool stuff can be expensive, but yeah, it's hard to say.
And I think what's really important to point out is that a family that doesn't pay fees certainly gets those same materials that any student gets. So I think that's where it also gets complicated is we have about 20% of our student population that do not pay fees based on their eligibility through free and reduced, you know.
Correct. We, we do not, I'll be colloquial, we don't stick it to people who truly can't afford it. That's, we have a policy in place to do that. The fees are not entirely made up. I think they were tied to, prorated, whatever you want to call it, to things like eighth grade graduation costs. And some additional things that came in there. I mean, we've, this is pretty summarized, but it wasn't just a quote unquote made up fee that was.
I'm sure it came somewhere.
Well, but sometimes we're leaning towards that direction.
I just, I personally think, and like, again, I can't direct anything, but I personally feel like I would like a better understanding of what this money is going towards.
Like, is it a percentage of the expenditure for each pupil?
It's three percent of graduation, science, materials, textbooks and, and whatever. Because like, I was just going to go back to last meeting with the tax. I don't think Jim put in a full budget. But we have like a materials and supplies line item budget, right? So if we're saying that's what it's for, what percentage of these fees are actually?
What percentage is the offset?
Of, of that total, yeah. So of that total budget, how much of it is this fees? And that would be good enough for me. Materials are very broad, but.
That's realistic.
And then I think, and then it's a better assessment of like, okay, that's what this is doing. It's this percentage of it. This is the increase. Like, it just, that feels more tangible to me. This just feels like a very philosophical conversation. I'm just struggling with it. I, I can't direct that myself. So I, four other people, I can't tell Martha, go do that with Jim.
Yeah, I mean, for me, either districts that don't have fees or like, why wouldn't every elementary age student regardless of, of grade be charged the same amount and every ju, you know, middle school be charged the same amount? I mean, I, I feel that way when I'm buying supplies. I'm like, whoa, second grade's way more expensive. Though I'm like, third grade, oh, that's plus money now.
Wait until you get a little older, then I can.
You know, it goes, but sometimes I would think, oh, it's going to keep getting higher as my children get older. And sometimes I'm surprised to find that actually, no, their first grade list was the highest, you know? So yeah, I mean, obviously very philosophical conversation, but.
And I mean, even before even trying to give direction on that, do we under, do we understand how much kindergarten costs? Like in the supplies, do we understand kindergarten, first, third grade versus eighth grade? Like, do we get that granular or do we just say, supplies, here's the budget?
You think of, use the example of conversation we had tonight about math, right? So we purchased, you know, a new math curriculum that had a variety of materials that go with them. The materials vary grade level to grade level. Do you want to count the extra coaching that happened? I mean, so again, I, I'd like to give you a more refined answer than this. To some degree, it is philosophical and it pays for curricular materials, right? And again, we're going to get those curricular materials that our students need regardless of the offset. But then there is a greater burden to all taxpayers and then it does, so again, I think that's the philosophical part as we said, is that if you are using the goods and services of the school district, you're going to, you're going to make a contribution. And it's been, it's been historic. And we've tried to go back and look at numbers. Why is one grade level more than another? There's, it's.
Because I, I was just going to ask, like, is the, so we, we did a math curriculum for the entire district. So does that cost less for kindergarten or does, well, sure, okay, sorry.
I don't think I can say, yeah.
So does that cost less? Do those materials cost less for a first grader than they do for a fifth grader?
Depends on the manipulatives that you use. And we just did all day kindergarten and they're going to require other manipulatives. So I'm not sure you can piece it that way unless you were to line item it.
Yeah, to me, that's like a different bucket.
And we bought the child who's getting additional supports and services.
Additional materials or a child of special education who may have more supplies and materials to accompany their learning, you know, like public school is going to provide for what children need. School fees have been in the school code and in Board of Education policy and long established by its history. And so absolutely, I appreciate the conversation, but the direct linkage that you're looking for, we could create it. I mean, we can go back and look at the budget and I think your point of, you know, what is the direct specific offset per grade level, per the purchases? There is a supplies and materials line and it does, you know, in terms of grade level by grade level. So it gets very granular in the budget, certainly.
It does, okay.
I think we always aimed at consumables. Like the workbook that my child receives at the beginning of the year that they write in, that they tear the pages out of and gets recycled at the end of the year. To a point you just said is, we very specifically do not, and you will never hear me, support anything that went towards us. We believe in equity. So if you're gifted or you need additional special services, we do not change what we ask you to supply. That is an equity thing. Every child is charged the same amount regardless of need or additional help, so.
Angela, maybe you can sort of help us out with the consumables because I think of online resources as replacing many consumable materials.
We still look for the new math curriculum resource. We still order actual work texts.
Yep.
And then the online is supplemental to that. We order workbooks, consumable items every year for our junior high students in math and science and E L A. And then Spanish and French also at the junior high level. And band and orchestra. And then we, I'm trying to think here. In E L A, it is more online for elementary than it is, like there are online resources and then hardback books. So it's not as, it's not, we don't reorder the consumables as much as in E L A at elementary. And then we did just purchase, as Sheri had mentioned, a multitude of manipulatives for our math program, which varied by grade level. And it's not younger is less or more. It just varied at every grade level depending on what manipulatives were needed. And then as we look at science resources, that could go like either way, right? It could be depending on where we land with the science curricular resource. It could be consumables and then replenishing the science supplies for those experiments, or it could be online, still replenishing the supplies. And then depending on what standards are covered and what lessons are used to cover those standards for science, those materials for experiments could vary again by grade level with not necessarily being able to delineate younger is more, less. And older, it's going to depend on what lessons they're doing.
For the record, I should mention David's email. I think everybody got it though, where he was talking about couldn't, couldn't support seven percent, but could support five.
I will take a recommendation and I will, I do not usually go this deep into the budget, but I will do my homework on where that is and come with any additional questions that I have next time. But I would personally like a recommendation because I don't really have a baseline to go off of here for any of these seven, five or three.
A recommendation from Director of Finance, from me.
I think I asked this perhaps last year as well. And you mentioned, you know, 20% or so of our families. I'm assuming those qualify for kind of pre-reduced lunch, so there's some fees. But if somebody approached the district that did not necessarily qualify, but still found, you know, four kids enrolled at $400 or $500 to be a financial burden for them, how would that be handled? Is there any ability for people to know, like, if you're having a difficulty with these fees, please contact the district or?
Yeah, so there are families that will call and request a payment plan.
Okay, so some accommodations that can be made outside of the free and reduced lunch families.
Yeah, I'm just going to reiterate again, this does not include the supply list that you get before the next year, which could, is usually for my kid, over $100. And with the notebooks and everything else. And I, I'm starting to worry, is this a burden for, for people in addition to the fees?
Here you are there. I have a 360 protractor from junior high that was on the list and never used. Was hard to find too.
I think that aspect gets to be an issue of much more careful selection of what are the necessary supplies to bring to class.
Let's go home with empty notebooks.
Empty notebooks.
Every year, I'll just tear out the first year payment. Hope yellow's on the list next year.
Next year.
It will be.
The three pages you drew something in, like, yes, but that's.
Yes. Yeah, there's no way I would support a seven though at this, at this point. I'm starting to feel a little bit like Linda and Stephanie. This is getting a little bit to what end.
I think we have the same conversation every year for the last several years. So I think we do need to either make a decision that these fees are based on something or these fees are just something that should go up a few percentage.
Yeah, because I haven't heard the details. We keep hearing, oh, we're going to hear about what they're, what they come from, but we never hear.
Like, we have to also limit that scope because it could be a very large project to figure out something that's such a small portion of our budget, which I don't think is a good use of our Director of Finance's time.
No, totally.
That's why I wondered if we capture it in any of the.
I think that's why we came to C P I.
So it was a note actually from our attorney back in 2018 when we had done sort of a deeper dive. And she just reminded, the Illinois school code allows school districts to charge students a fee for items that are directly consumed or used by students, including supplies, instructional materials, use of school equipment, field trip charges, school records and school health services. District 96 Board Policy 4:140 references text. District 96 Board Policy 4:140 references textbooks, consumable materials, extracurricular activities and other student fees. And states that the superintendent recommends a fee schedule to the board, but does not state how often an assessment is made. If the board does not want to continue charging fees, the board must adopt a policy indicating that decision.
I don't think that's what we're disputing. I think we're saying, we can't explain to families where this money is.
Where this is going, you know?
So, and we do.
It's consumables, but we don't.
I was going to bring this up this year.
Yeah, it offsets.
You know, so I'll, I'll use the example too of co-curriculars. Not all families participate, but they pay no additional fees for co-curriculars.
So is that what this money is for?
I'm saying it's, it's, it's an offset to the general, you know.
It's an offset to general consumables.
Doesn't cover the co-curriculars and not all children do it either. So it's, it's, it's complicated. I, I, I don't disagree. We can certainly draw those more direct lines in the budget if they're not already there. And Jim's not here tonight to speak to it, so I, I don't want to say that it's not there. But we've, we've, as Aunt Linda said, we've done this deeper dive. And I, I think we end up with sort of a struggle, like philosophically, how to best do this. So the agreement was to take CPI as a number and a rounding factor and make some, you know, increase annually.
Yes, and that's, I think that's.
And the board can change direction on that. That's certainly up to all of you.
Yeah, I'm just saying, it looks like the best I can find is we have a 1.0, just under $1.3 million educational, in the educational fund under supplies and materials. So I can't find anything deeper than that. So if that's the number we want to use and just say, this is an offset to supplies and materials, then I don't know what the total, how, what our total fee, how much we collect on total fees, but is that 1%? Is that half percent? Is that 2%?
I'm guessing at the time when we made this conversion, we probably didn't want to jump off a cliff. You know, so we wanted to make things, whatever, the increases that were out there wouldn't be intolerable at the time.
That's definitely true.
So it's probably, we started at a baseline of a fee that hadn't risen for several years. So it's probably a pretty low percentage of that to, to begin with. But it, it, perhaps we can hear more from Jim on it next time.
Oh, yeah, actually, I think I found all the specific light items were, yeah. So I guess I, I'll do my homework and I'll come back with more because I don't have enough information.
Definitely can share that with, with the board, definitely where you're looking.
Yeah, so this is the, yeah, I'll share it. I can send an email out. I don't know where I'm at exactly. I went back to one of our prior, oh, in Board Book, thank you Kathy, in Board Book, we have the fiscal year 21 adopted budget on the right-hand side for our Quick Links. And then I just did a quick, you know, Ctrl+F and search supplies. And it looks like the page 46, 13, page 13 is like a very extensive line item of all the things. And then there's 400 is the supplies and the materials associated with those specific instructional and support services things. So that's actually, that's what I need to look at. So I will do my own homework on that.
Is there anything else to be said on this?
Only that it, Linda's right, though, it is a partially philosophical question. And we're going to have to make that decision. No, it really is.
Sorry, Sheri, could you repeat that?
It's partially a philosophical question whether or not this continues. Unless we get some more details.
Whether we want fees or not?
Yeah.
Just in general, yeah.
Yeah, I just want, I mean, we, we have a really, like, yeah, like you were saying, was like, if somebody asks us what's this going to and it's a district with a really healthy budget, like, I just want to make sure we're not overcharging people just because we picked some number and it continued to climb up. But if there is, you know, a better sense for what we could charge for these consumables and other line items, then I'm comfortable, I'm not saying we have to get rid of fees altogether, but it just feels like these arbitrary kind of increases. And I, I don't know, it feels like perhaps we might be overcharging in some areas.
I, I guess then that, then that's a question, perhaps we've asked this question before of, you know, how do we, are our fees compare to nearby districts? And again, it sounds like we're putting a lot of time and attention into a relative small.
We did a comparison, going back through some old notes, trying to find it, but we did, we did that exercise. We can certainly update that. As I'm just going through my notes, it does seem that it's, it's, you know, I'm looking at Linda almost, you know, it's been multiple times, I know, over the past five to seven years that we've taken a look. And I think there's, there's a challenge in it. And I appreciate what the board is, you know, saying.
It's the impact, you know, when you're thinking about the makeup of our families and our districts and the impact that it can have on them. I know, like, for us, this seems like a, you know, kind of small drop in the bucket in the scheme of things, but a couple hundred dollars over the summer, you know, for a family.
For what it's worth, I know these fees are deductible because I'm always hunting for receipts every April 15th. This one, this one specifically, there's a specific line item in the, the Illinois taxes that talks about school fees.
That's correct.
Have we talked it to death? Oh, really?
No.
Seriously?
So I don't think I've been deducting this from my taxes.
Next year, there you go.
I don't think I do that.
Don't worry.
Our school fees, definitely, you gotta, gotta get those school fees out every year. All right.
Yes, to answer your question, I think we've talked this to death.
Perhaps. All right, so if there's nothing else from finance, we will move on personnel.
I don't have anything.
No, thank you.
Perfect.
Easy enough.
I yield my time to fees.
But that discussion is closed.
Okay.
All right, then that takes us to future meeting dates. And the next meeting is November 16th, regular business meeting, 7:00 PM in the Learning Resource Center at Hauser Junior High. Board will enter into closed session at 6:15 PM if necessary and return to open session at 7:00. December 7th, Committee of the Hole meeting at 7:00 PM at Blithe Park in the multipurpose room. December 21st is a regular business meeting, 7:00 PM in the Learning Resource Center at Hauser Junior High. Board will enter into closed session at 6:15 PM if necessary and return to open session at 7:00. January 4th, consider cancellation. We need to have that conversation or should we defer that to another conversation?
When do they come back? Do they come back?
It is in the middle of winter break.
It's in the middle, it's during winter break. I say we skip it because it's during winter break, but that's my opinion.
I already know I won't be here because it is during this year's winter break.
Do our administrators want to come in during that? No.
And, and I did talk to the leadership team in anticipation of the question and I know, you know, there's nothing as we sort of project out our conversations, we can certainly poke holes in that meeting.
I will just be coming back the night, the day before that meeting, so I'll be here, but.
You'd have 24 hours of recovery time, you'd be all right.
I don't think I will be here.
Unless there's business that needs to be done.
It's very rare that we meet during the school holiday.
Yeah.
Unless, unless there's some emergency, obviously.
Especially if, like you're saying, there's, so there's probably not, you know, there's not any anticipated action items for.
Well, what does everyone think? Sounds like we're saying no, we don't need it.
I already deleted it from my calendar. I'm assuming that's the decision? I did.
She did, it's already gone.
Might be a pretty big snowstorm.
Do I have to add it back in?
I deleted my text.
No, and if people aren't going to be here and it's during the break, just get rid of it, I'm sorry. Unless there's some magic emergency that happens.
If maybe we can make the January Board of Education meeting longer if there's any.
Fine, yeah, perfect.
Oh, we do love long meetings. All right, speaking of which, sounds like we're getting rid of it, yeah, okay. All right, is there anything else? If there is nothing else, this meeting is adjourned.